Yeah, you can call this meeting to order.
Six pseudo gamble.
Yeah, six oh three PM YI say I'm opening meeting number one thousand six hundred and twenty-five of the Southern Berkeley Regional School District School Committee meeting. And before we move forward, I want to introduce Nancy Worthington over here, who was appointed Tuesday night by the SLEF Board of New Marlboro and because she knows people in Town Hall and is on a Conservation Commission and understands the how you get appointed system, she miraculously is in a seat now with all the paperwork done. So I really appreciate you expediting that so you can be here with us. And I, we usually have named plates, I just want to introduce you to the other members. This is Bonnie Silver, Jeffrey Blumberg, Art Taggy, Dennis Sears next to you, and Danil Kelly. And Sandy Hubbard's here, Director of Student Services.
And Julie, Julie Dolan.
Julie Dolan is Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Instruction and developmental development.
I know, it's a long one. Jessica Carpenter, I think you might know. Also was, yeah.
And the other four members.
And there's Laura Rodriguez from Maire and Kara Smith from Sheffield. All right.
We identified that group.
Oh, who, who is Redbird, please?
I'm just, I'm just in Cardinal Jackson.
Okay, what is that?
Just a citizen. I don't know why I called it Redbird, it must be a name I put in there at one point.
Okay, and, and this is definitely a good UTO.
Yes. Nice to meet you formally, yes.
All right, so I think I did all of that. And we all have packets, we have to thank one of that for a wonderful folder. And there is no miscellaneous correspondence in here, so I dare say we can go past item two A on to item three, which is student representative report.
Jay, it will not be here tonight. We have no information to share, we'll be here in the next.
Yeah, well, this is only one, one week, half week, so we'll be hearing from the student representative in our beginning of April meeting.
Same as spotlight.
Same as spotlight, thank you. We enjoy the student aspect, but anyway, so now we're on to item five, which is public comment that is related to items on our agenda. So any of the public who's on this meeting can raise their hand and make a statement of up to three minutes. Those two. I don't see any, I don't see any hands, so no comment today. So in your packet on page six A, the business managers warrant is listed. And Chris is here. I think we'll entertain a motion on the warrant and then Chris can give us more information.
I moved to accept the warrants presented March eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Jeff and Bonnie seconding, all right, is there anybody? I'm going to open the floor to Chris to give us an explanation of these expenditures. Thank you, Chris.
Sure, no problem. So we have a few warrants tonight to discuss. The first one is the manual warrant on March first. That was the insurance payments for the month of February. Then we have, the next warrant was basically just your standard warrant miscellaneous expenses. You might wonder how we have miscellaneous expenses on $278,000, but about 163 of that was the transportation bill itself. So that, that made up the majority of that particular warrant. Two payroll warrants, both for pretty much the same amount. Those are just your basic payrolls that we typically have every two weeks. And then the P card warrant is basically just payments to what are basically the district credit cards that people use when businesses might not take a purchase order or something like that, or it could even just be something that is needed very quickly, stopping at, say, a Home Depot or a hardware store to pick up supplies needed for a repair or something. They use the P card for that, and, and so this is just paying that bill. I don't know if anybody has any questions at all on this?
I also want to highlight that when we use a P card, we do get a percentage back. It's almost like a cash back reward type of thing, so in case, that's why we, we do bother to have them.
Yeah, we typically get close to $1,000 in a year, you know, depends on the usage, but that's what we put in the budget for revenue was $1,000, and it's typically pretty close to that.
Every little bit.
Exactly. Thank you, Chris. I've shown that there were no grants or gifts or budget transfers because we don't see any evidence in the packet.
No, not at this meeting, just the warrant report.
Okay, so let's vote.
Chair, I moved, we approve the idea, man.
We have, we have, we have a second minute, I just skipped the vote. Arthur?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yep.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, and Nancy, Nancy.
Nancy said yes. All right. She can't because she was not here.
Well, on the warrant.
Sorry, mistake.
I understand it was minutes or.
Yeah, got it, yeah.
Just to clarify, when I was doing a small orientation for Nancy on votes, if the issue is some, I tried to fill her in on most things, but if she doesn't feel informed enough to vote, I suggested that an extension was the appropriate thing to do, and I just want to double check that this is correct. Okay, thank you, all right. So I, the next item is the business with district member towns, and I'm trying to call on Bonnie in case she has things that she'd like to say, because she's been extremely involved in a number of the subcommittees and may have information since last week that would be, that she might like to share.
Particularly with the regional.
Yeah.
Planning Board, well, first, a number of you were there Tuesday night. I thought that went really quite well. It was, that, for those of you who weren't there, Beth turned over her sixth, fifth, sixth. Superintendent roundtable. Community conversation. Community conversation to this topic. What I found very interesting is some people who are really well-informed citizens really were totally not aware of the process in setting up this committee. I was, they had no idea, someone commented they had no idea that the school committee members from each of the towns. Someone else made a comment having no idea how the committee came together. So I think one of the things, you know, we have another meeting of community outreach subcommittee tomorrow. And I think that education piece, I'm really happy we went ahead with it. I thought it came across, I don't know what other, because a lot of you were on, came across completely neutral, inclusive, obviously, you know, questions about finance and what are the amounts about all of this. So we're not at that stage. And I think, I think our holding this meeting, despite all the issues that went on before, approached, is, was absolutely the right thing to do. Sorry, we didn't have any more people on, but I think they all raised a lot of issues that we're feeling throughout, throughout this process. So that was my big thing. Yep, now this community outreach subcommittee was like meeting every single week, like we didn't have enough. So Laura, I don't know how this will impact, oh, you know, what we're doing, but they actually have on tomorrow's agenda, you saw it, you were seeing the agenda, that it's comments on what we did Tuesday night, and then a plan for eight towns outreach. So this is a lot still to be done. I'm just being nice about it.
I would just say the one comment that I think we're receiving, or question, I, I think the largest question that is out there, and just in case I don't do the four thirty on Friday afternoon, meeting every Friday, that I think the biggest question that people are having is the last question that was brought up and addressed on the legality of how this would work. And I think it would behoove all of us to get the correct answer, because it's really, that's something that's really being talked about quite a bit.
Yeah, it's the issue of, of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If all eight towns need to, need to vote on this. And initially, that was what was in what was set up when this was formed, that all eight towns have to vote. What happens if, if Allford votes no?
Right. So then the answer seemed to, as she needed, sound like that then Allford, they can still go ahead with this, but Allford would be kicked out of the.
I think it was just a troubling, people would like more information.
That's what it sounds like to me, too.
Yeah, well, that, that's the answer.
Oh, yeah, we'd be on our own or something, yeah.
So.
Meaning we have to.
Okay.
So one of the things that we're, well, what we're going to have to decide is whether we want our attorneys to look into this, how we're going to find an answer. I understand that people are going to be going to their individual towns to ask that question. And over the next month or so, I hope that there's a way of getting an answer that we, we feel is reliable. And this is, there's so many things that we're trying to do that are not typical, that haven't been done before, to have two regional school districts come together, I think is not common. So there may not be answers that are great, so I'm going to go Bonnie and Dennis.
I'm going to go back to what Dennis, you originally were saying way back when, when all of this was being formed. There are MGL related to this. And I, and I do not think we should be spending our legal money on this. There's money in that budget.
Right.
To be able to find out and consult with attorneys to determine this. And they'll have to look into the law, because I, we don't want eight different towns going to their own council. It shouldn't be, you know, this is, that's my opinion, that's why the money's there, that's why towns put up money. This is where there has to be a decision. And I defer to Dennis on all of this, because he probably has done more research than anyone in all eight towns on this issue.
Well, yeah, I, I actually haven't gone back and looked at it, but I, I do know that, yes, you know, how, how you form a regional school district, because that's really what the legal step is, is forming a, a regional school district. And that is clearly spelled out in Master General Law. I mean, I ha, I haven't looked at it for a long time, but, you know, I, I, you know, so I, I hesitate to, you know, kind of speak to some of the things that you've expressed a little unsurity on, but, you know, you know, but it, but it is, it's, it's clearly in there, and it's clearly just all laid out, boom, this is it, this is how it works. The, the only difference that's changed is that about the time when this whole thing started, was when they also made that change that led to the type of organization that you have in the team working on it right now. Where that, that's, that was different than how regional used to be formed, where, where basically you had this kind of combination of townspeople and members of the school committee. That, that was a, that was a change in Master General Law right before that whole thing started.
Danil, I noticed for you.
Yeah, I just had a question. We don't have, I have to finally answer this, we don't have, the regional school district planning board does not already have lawyers set in place, right? That would be something we'd have to go find.
No, no, no.
They do, it, there's already, yes, it's already chosen, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say, just interject, that hearing what Bonnie said, we are not going to refer this to our legal team without the full vote of the entire school committee, because we have to look great at it. Yeah, Bonnie?
I'm, I'm not saying that there isn't at some point time when we'll have to turn.
Oh, I agree.
To our own council, but at this point, they have an attorney. And also, there is another step after the regional planning board. You have to form another group. If you get past this, you go through all recommendations, the, I wish I could, I'm sure I have it here somewhere, but there, the laws tell you what you will have to do next, in terms of what has to be formed, in order to go to the next step. So we are a distance away from that, a real distance away from that. And I, I want to add just one other non-legal to it. We're going to be having a meeting of the education subcommittee on the fifteenth.
Of a planning board.
Of the planning board. And it might be interesting to listen to, because after several of us attended the finance subcommittee meeting, there were, well, it was an open meeting, so I could say, they're building a model based upon twenty-two, twenty-two or twenty students in every classroom. They're building their model based upon a seven, eighth middle school. And they're building their model on staff leaving by attrition. And I raised the issue that I think the education committee needs to look at this. I did not get a favorable response, but it's clear that none of, we don't operate in that way. We spent a long time coming up with our middle school model. And I am, you know, it's a real concern. So I know everybody has loads of other things to do, but I think if you possibly can listen in on the, on meeting on education, because it's also where they're going to try to compare our philosophy.
Well, that's like, if I decide that I'm going to participate in that, and I'm not sure that that's going to happen, so.
But the real concern is if they're setting up a model that's coming out that twenty-second, that's going to say one high school, I mean, this is an open meeting, so I could say, one high school in Gray Barrington, a middle school that is seven and eight, and that the class sizes, Jesse, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but neither of our high schools has anywhere near an average class size of twenty or twenty-two.
So I, I just want to make a slight correction to what Bonnie said. That is one of the models that's going to be presented. We understand they're all going to be presented, so you can hear all these scenarios that they put together. And then the, the research team is going to tell us which one they prefer, and we strongly suspect that it's going to be what Bonnie said, but we don't know for sure, just based on the way.
Yes, I think I went too far with that.
I just want to clarify, because we have been criticized for.
Yes.
Not meeting through, and so.
That's, that, the education meeting commits, subcommittee is the fifteenth?
It's on the sixteenth of five.
Sixteenth of five.
And all of this is on.
Our other.
Yeah, but all these meetings are easily accessible on the eight town dot org website. And so whoever can come.
Yeah, and the twenty-second, Jane, I'm glad you brought that up. This was, we wish the finance committee, and I was happy I was allowed to ask questions by the Roger Kavanaugh, but they'll, they will be presenting the different models. But if the model related to high school combination is, these were the premises that I understand, they said that Jay Giverwhite gave that to the consultant who's laying out the different scenarios in finance, so.
Okay, I think we got the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And Jesse, I'm right.
I think you need to tap to March twenty-second on some humor, so you don't miss that, because we need a lot of ears and a, and a lot of hands up and a lot of questions asked.
Now, I have one other question.
Of course, you're hidden behind.
What happened, how does our district agreement, how do we end our district agreement to form another district agreement? If all the towns don't have, don't agree?
We can't.
Right.
So all this could be new anyway?
Well, yeah, there's a lot of things.
Lot of, lot of things.
Yeah. Nancy, you had your hand up before, I don't know whether.
The question that I had, had to do, this is going back to discussions about the process, the different lay, the outline that has to be followed, the protocol, whatever you want to say, is there a list of what those different levels are? So that people know what.
You have to go to, I will find the MGLs related to it, and as Dennis pointed out, there were some changes. So there's, there's one area, because it's for regional school districts to combine, is different, obviously, from, let's say, Lee and, you know, Southern Berkshire.
I, I would say it might be helpful, just if, if there's a link to it and we can have, or access to the, check for the access, ready access to it, because everyone will all know what you're talking about, instead of looking for.
We actually shared it, you know, probably more than two years ago, so it really makes sense.
I got that somewhere.
To do it again.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great.
I'm going to make a note of that, so that everybody on the committee gets that. But are we ready to go on to my very elaborate chairman's report? Oh, did you want to say one more thing?
If I could make one, one comment, though, basically, I was approached by somebody the other day who has read the Master General Law.
Oh, okay.
Okay, on forming districts. And basically, the, the question that I was asked was, what is the function of the body that's in place right now? And, and basically, I couldn't give them a good answer. So one, one of the things I think that the body needs to do is, is do a little better job of informing the public. What exactly is the purpose of this first step? Because remember, this is a, if, if this type of a change were to take place, it's a long and complex road that has to be gone down, okay? And, and, you know, this is the first step, is this body. But clearly, based upon what this individual said to me, that he felt was the, the, the general public's feeling about it, is that nobody has a clue of what the purpose of the body is that's in place right now.
I'm, I, I think that, I, I can give you the simple answer to that.
Well, you, you don't need to give me a, a simple answer.
Well, I, I think.
I think the, the body itself needs to.
Yeah, okay.
Communicate clearly to the general public. Here's what the, the purpose of the first step, which this body is, is all about, period.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, you know, not, not to dive right into, you know, the whole thing of how, how it might look if something were to happen and blah, 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 blah.
I agree, I think we're going a little beyond the scope of what this body is supposed to do.
That's maybe still two years up.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I won't belabor the point. I just wanted to mention in my report, one of the things that really struck me in the meeting on Tuesday, is how interested our community members, especially ones who have children in younger grades, are in understanding what we're doing as we go through. What is the middle school like? What is upper elementary like? What is high school like? Because they, especially the third grade parents, are making decisions about what to do.
Are you checking Marlboro?
Third grade in Marlboro, but everybody, because we, we sit, we have this K to three concept that we're working on now. And I hope that we do more conversations or targeted work, not that administration needs any more things to do, but that's one of our really important steps that we need to let these folks know what, what's ahead. And so we'll put our, I think the communications and outreach subcommittee can contact various administrators. I'm trying to gather documentation from various sectors where, like our internship program is beautifully spelled out in a document, which I can share easily with somebody that says, well, what are the choices in the high school? I know how much work that takes, so I want to appreciate that everybody's maxed out, but I think it behooves us to do that communication.
But we're also in process, so remember.
No, no, no.
So, so I'm just saying, like, if you look, when we talk about communication, if you go to any budget presentation, it's here we are, I, I clearly stated where we are in the next steps of the early childhoods, and go to that document of, you know, what are, what is it we're doing, and where are we in that process? When I've been having the meetings at the school, I had some, I was at South Eggavant and New Marlboro yesterday for the good portion of the morning, and we talked about where we are in those next steps. I mean, we always have to keep going back to our action plan, our action steps, and I, you know, people say, aren't you, it sounds like you're saying the same thing, that's okay, you have to repeat things six, seven, eight times to make sure that people, you know, remember, there's a lot going on in people's lives. So, you know, we're still very early in the development, and I, I know today Sandy had a meeting with their early childhood team, and I'm sure she'll talk about that, but it's ongoing all the time, so it's hard to get that down in a, in a.
No, I understand. Why, or. It's exactly what Dennis said.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta do it again, I mean, we think we've explained it, we did an article in New Marlboro and Sheffield, we've done these, and it was clear from that meeting on Tuesday, how many people don't have any idea.
And it's been a couple of years, so, you know, there's time in between those.
All right, so we have superintendent's report, if you don't have, it's in your packet.
I sent it, and then it should, there's.
So if you don't have it, if I'm going to send.
I, I put it in every folder.
Okay.
But then there's extras. And then, I did make it pretty, I did change it up a little bit, it was, yeah. There's extras, yeah. So I don't, we're not really belaboring it, but I wanted to just give an update, seeing we were just here a week ago, and that was right after the break. So we continue to monitor our cases, and I'm sure Sandy will have more information than me specifically, but I wanted to know, we're still participating, or note that we're still participating in the state testing programs, and we're still continuing to update the COVID case report on the website for families who want to take a look, but we have seen a significant decrease, that's for you, I knew you were. So I just wanted to point that out for, for everyone. So an incoming news flash, I told Mr. Carpenter I'd sneak it into my report tonight, because it's, it's new information, that right now, the school committee, I believe, has set the graduation date this year for Saturday, June fourth. However, we recently were contacted by Tanglewood that it might be an option to go back to Tanglewood for graduation. So Principal Carpenter, who's here in the back, said, did a survey to families and students to say what. So Principal Carpenter, who's here in the back, said, did a survey to families and students to say, what would you prefer? You know, what do what if you had these two options, costs are approximately the same for either one. And it came back about around seventy percent of the people who responded to the survey would prefer to go back to Tanglewood. So normally, we say to the school may approve the whole shebang, right? Here's the day and where we're going to have graduation. So we don't have the contracts formally in place, but I didn't want to go all the way to April seventh and not. And, you know, he, Mr. Carpenter asked if we could talk about it or at least make you aware of that and get your thoughts if.
So would you like a motion?
Well, you usually do once. So if you if you feel like.
Tentatively approves awaiting final negotiations the uh June fourth. Did they give us a time yet?
They haven't. That's the other thing. They haven't. They haven't confirmed. We've set that, right? Because so we're still also waiting for the date.
June fourth, twenty twenty two at Tanglewood USA.
Okay, so we have Bonnie making the motion and Dennis second being it. And is there anybody who wants to have further discussion or talk to Jesse in any way? Go ahead, Jeff.
Given the last couple of years, these kids and their families want to be at Tanglewood, I think it's a good celebration and affirmation. So that's my opinion.
Bart?
Will the awards night, will you break it up or will it all be like?
Now, we did what I also put out in the survey asking um parents. I asked them if we continue to do the award tonight here, would they prefer to move it to the next day if it rains or to go inside of the tap pack, knowing that they might have limited tickets for that? I think we're sort of in favor of keeping it separate for tonight and keeping that separate from graduation. Just in our experience last year in doing it, um, my personal opinion is I I thought that that was much better. And, you know, obviously, I've had two kids graduate recently. One had it during my older one had it during graduation and Jack graduated last year. I thought that was I thought it's two separate ceremonies, which is a nicer way to do it.
And I agree with that. A hundred percent.
Yeah. And so when I ask parents, I I just want families, I just wanted to know, like, you know, would they prefer having the one date and knowing we'd have to go inside or just moving it? And it was about sixty five percent were in favor of going to the next day. And, you know, I mean, we're talking about um, I don't think I don't think the parents was that or families was that big a deal to just slide to the next day. So I I thought that was important and, you know, I really, really enjoyed having graduation here the last couple of years. We got a lot of really good feedback. At the same time, we got a lot of feedback from people about Tanglewood, about how special that is. And certainly for our kids who are involved in the band, that was a that's a big deal for them in Tanglewood and how it sounds and things like that. And, you know, I I got a few parents who who sent me or family members sent me emails, you know, saying that about Tanglewood and the band and things like that. And I got a couple of emails from people who really enjoyed having it here. So I look at it as a win-win, whether we do it here or do it there. I think both ways is pretty special for the kids.
Um, fun.
I I want to second what Bart said and speaking to people, you know, parents and families and everything. They last year, they liked the idea of the separate event and they were particularly sensitive. Couple of parents I spoke with to the fact that there are some students who sit there for a while and they're getting, you know, nothing. And um I I thought it was a great way to celebrate accomplishments on a I like a separate day. So yeah, my vote and from the people I've spoken to.
All right, so I'm gonna take a roll call vote here on uh the motion is the school committee tentatively approves holding graduation at Tanglewood on June the fourth and keeping separate ceremony for awards night.
Question?
Yeah.
Tentatively approves, should we word that differently?
Pending uh contracts.
Yeah, because I we don't know if the date, maybe I I don't know what we're gonna get for a date, but.
Hopefully that on the next meeting that.
We'll know.
We'll have seen the contract and we can share that with.
Does this motion give you the clearance to be able to proceed and pursue contracts? Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're aiming for.
Okay.
To continue negotiations.
Got it.
To firm up graduation date and location. How about that?
Right. And then Dennis, do you accept that change?
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna vote. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Can I?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, and Nancy? Okay, so we unanimously support moving along on this planning.
Thank you.
Nice this show.
All right, nice. Okay, now your report continues.
Okay, wow. So the rest of this is really just kind of a a quick um note about the mid-cycle, the superintendent mid-cycle and how the administrative team and I worked through our strategy for continuous improvement, the district improvement plan, as well as our collective goals for the school committee and the superintendent to kind of give ourselves a check in, a mid a midyear check in. And I think you should do that a couple of times to see where you are and in any of the work that you're doing. And overall, you know, there's quite a few challenges this year with, you know, not expecting or maybe expecting COVID to continue as it has it had through this year, as well as the the significant amount of time that is being invested in the work of the regional school district planning board. And with that, I'm just so pleased with how much we have been able to accomplish outside of that on our action plan for this district and improving the experience for our students. So I tried, it was it was too much to put that all in here, every step. But I think every good plan and and significant change takes time. So I think the goals will stay in place, but the action steps may change as we move forward. So I put a link to where the goals are and so that you can see what the action steps are and the strategies that were identified, as well as potential suggestions for evidence. You can see for yourselves what why I say what I'm saying. I think there are two areas out of all those fun things to to read that we haven't made as much growth and but it's still early. One is on our having a discussion with the school committee and our public safety officials about our formal adoption of our our safety protocols model. So an example of that would be Alice, for instance, if you adopt that as a model, we need to revisit that. And also, we're still, I don't think we're quite as far along with establishing a committee to create a standard space report card at the elementary level. We have gotten there on pre-K level, but not the whole elementary as of yet. There's still time and I'm I think there's lots of good things that are in progress, so that's okay. So if anybody has any questions, wants to go over things, wants to see some evidence, I'll be adding to that as we go through. And so I'm happy to have that. Thank you, Ellie or Stella? Or both?
So just in the two areas where we need to catch up, is there anything that you need from the school committee to help you with that? Or should we just be really bringing your lead and?
Yeah, one one of them will be probably a meeting like we did a couple of years ago before COVID, you know, was dominating most of our safety and security stuff.
Yeah.
With public safety, like we did an executive session, bless you, to talk, you know, about our strategies and why we're recommending what we're recommending. The other one is just, you know, bandwidth and and time, so I think they'll plan on working on it. I don't know, you know, there's only so much we can do in the time that we have. So there's progress. It's I I really had to dig to find something to say that we haven't gotten as far as we wanted to. So I'm I'm super proud of this.
Do you think that this will be something that we'll focus on once the budget's passed? Is this like likely?
I think there's a lot. I I don't know about the elementary. I I think there's a lot on their plate still with just standards and curriculum writing and some and data. And there's a lot there. So I want to say yes, but I'm not going to hold everybody to that. Let's see. We want to do it right. So maybe the that'll be something that we start up early next year. I I'm not sure. But the budget, I'm not sure affects that as much as the other work that we're having. So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we move along to Julie Dolan for the professor.
Yes, you do, Pastor.
You are welcome.
Hi.
It's your turn.
It's my turn. Bye. Yay. Um, I I don't have a lot to add to the report that I already submitted to you. Tomorrow, we have a half day of professional development, which is wonderful. Wish we could have more and more of it. But we have iReady, which is the math curriculum that we purchased that's going to be doing a professional development with our K through eight teachers. And then we have a small group that's going to do crisis prevention training. And then at the secondary, we're going to be focusing on curriculum review. And so it's gonna be a very busy day and we are really lucky because we have gotten Roberto's Pizza to provide lunch for the staff and faculty tomorrow to thank them for all their hard work. Of course you can come. So we hope that they appreciate this small token of our appreciation for them. So it should be a fun afternoon. I'm looking forward to it.
I just want to re- remind everybody that Roberto is Ravi Robles that we know from back in the early two thousands as a talented actor, artist, and I'm so pleased to see him in our community doing such a wonderful thing.
Greatest pizza town.
And the whole area.
Really? We're paying for it, right?
Yeah. So, yes, he's not donating. We're paying.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
And I don't think it's mentioned here. I just about and maybe this isn't the appropriate spot, but the email from Charles about the MCAS testing.
Okay.
Um, so I was, you know, clicked on all the things and I tried to see is there a spring testing this year?
For MCAS, yes, there is.
Did it say in it on the it was I I just couldn't find on the website when it was. I know they're splitting it up.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, sorry. The letter has all the dates in it. It's the attachment. I think you probably saw the message. And there are this this year will be two ELA, two math for three through five, and then the science engineering for fifth grade. So it'll be back to what it was pre-COVID. There will be two days of math, two days of ELA, and then obviously a a STEM test for fifth graders in addition to the math and ELA.
Thank you, Charles.
Is that sorry, did that that did that answer Danielle's question? Did I totally put?
Thank you.
Okay, and 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 Finn was at Roberto's just yesterday. I gotta add that. Oh, no, Tuesday, Tuesday.
All right, you know, it's exactly two years ago.
Oh.
It was this Thursday night where you got the notice while we were meeting.
Yeah, we had just passed the budget.
On time.
Yeah, for the next day. Yep.
As we know, it has changed. Yes.
Well, we are we um I think could we just take a minute to applaud our administration for comparing us through this?
Yes.
No, I didn't. I didn't see a stumble the entire few years. I just.
They are amazing.
Well, and that you're included.
Well, thank you. That's nice. But they are amazing. I can't say it enough. I'm not sure if I did.
All right, so.
Right, right.
Next on the agenda is the Director of Student Services, Sam Robert.
Hello. Good evening. I have a report that I shared with you. I try to do this every year just to talk about some of the income services that we have related to the budget, special education, inclusive circuit breaker, which I talk about a lot. I also mentioned about least restrictive environment and that and the agencies that we work closely with. If you have any questions about that, feel free to ask. But I have a number of other things to share. One being that I'll start with saying that I what I didn't tell you yesterday, Jane, when we were emailing back and forth is that I have a new computer and everything that was on there regarding um our early childhood program was in hieroglyphics, so I couldn't really send like too much. But we're working on updating that plan. We got an early childhood committee meeting today. We're updating it. I've had some conversations this week and we're trying to work on expanding an aftercare program for pre-k too. So there's some things that I will be adding to it. The fantastic early childhood team is working on that a little bit tomorrow, and then I will get that to you. But we've been working on it kind of nonstop. There's been some some recent new developments. So I wanted you to have the most up-to-date thing. And what I didn't want to say is a question on that? Yes.
You didn't bring either one of us in.
It was internal. It was not a task force. Okay, it was just our.
Just making sure I didn't miss.
Yeah.
We were basically talking about our pre-K and kindergarten screening fail, which is coming up. We do right after school. What's up?
Because you need another meeting this week.
Which is why I was repeatedly asking what the last day of school was. Um, I just want to give a COVID update. In the past, from Wednesday to Wednesday, it's have a report to the state and how that puts it on the the website. Between Wednesday and Wednesday this past week, obviously, that was return to school after the school break. We got five cases reported to us.
Bless you.
Five cases reported to us. And then yesterday, we, as we do every Wednesday, conduct the routine COVID pool testing. And we had one case that was found in a pool. We had fifty two pools. We had one positive pool. We had one case that was positive. So that's where we're at right now regarding that. So that's great news. It's far more manageable and better for everybody that seems to be going, which it seems to be going down. We continue to do the routine global testing as long as they're doing it, the state is, you know, supporting it. We'll continue to do it, I believe, unless we make some change here, because it makes sense. And we're also continuing to do the at-home tests, which I think are very helpful to people. And I happen to know that those at-home tests have been used to identify some of the tests, the the positive cases that have been reported to us. So that's our resource for us. Other things that you should know about is I talk about this all the time. I feel like I have to because it's incredibly important, is the social emotional well-being of our students and staff and families. That's something we continue to focus on. You're aware that we have a mental health tier system of supports grant. And we're going to be implementing a universal screening that we'll be doing primarily to start at the secondary. We may be breaking it down and doing certain grade levels to start because obviously, once you do that screening and when you gather that data, you want to have a plan for how you're going to support. So we're going to be doing that very soon. And I'm going to have a meeting with some of the mental health professionals tomorrow during our half day to to discuss that a little bit more and how we can move forward with the implementation and then subsequently looking at the data that we receive on that. Continuing to to see, you know, just an uptick in the needs there and get working really closely with pediatricians that are local and counselors and whatnot. So we want to continue to support in any way we can. We're getting closer and closer to the warm line. I'm going to be sending out this really wonderful flyer that carries your data. Help us make. We had to tweak it out. I'm going to send it out to the the town tomorrow so we can get some support there. And then once that happens, we'll send it off to a printer and to get that going. We have our phones in place. Everybody's got everything set up and just set this the mailbox set up. And I think we're we're ready to move. The people are are ready to to jump in and do that. So that's great news.
No, I see. We just what are you using for the screening?
The screening it's called. It's called the scare.
It's called the scare.
The scare. Isn't that a great acronym? Um, and I have it here on my computer somewhere. Anyway, I I forget exactly what the acronym stands for and I can pull it up and share it with you.
When you share it with me, I'll forget.
But but essentially, it it focuses on anxiety in particular.
Okay.
Okay, and it's very short. It's about forty questions. The student fills it out themselves. Or if they need, you know, support, need reading it or completing it, we'll provide support for that. But it's it we decided to focus because a lot of our concern, the concerns that have been raised have been related to anxiety. But it's, we decided to focus because a lot of our concern, the concerns that have been raised have been related to anxiety. So increased anxiety. So we decided to focus specifically on that. There's so many screens that I'm sure you know are out there. The website I was on, there's literally like 100 meetings per week. So we went through and researched and found one that we felt targeted, what we need to know right now. The other thing I just wanted to mention to you that's in my report, which is exciting, Special Olympics is going to happen this year. It is held at Monument Mountain on their field out back there. It's kind of a central location because it's, it's for all of Southern Bercher County from Pitts Field down here. And that will be on Wednesday, May 4th, and it usually starts around 9:30. Hopefully we'll have a beautiful day.
How many kids are we spending?
Well, we have kids that volunteer. So there's, you know, a number of students that volunteer, usually about 15. And then we have about 10 to 12 participants, a little bit more. Students love it.
Yeah.
It's a fun time. Thank you.
All right. So now we are going on to the most interesting business, so going on the adoption of the budget. The, who would like to read the entire motion? Thank you, Jeffrey.
I move that we adopt the fiscal year '23 operating transportation and capital budgets, uh, which would be operating expenditure budget of $15,713,650, transportation expenditure budget of $2,072,240, capital expenditure budget of $343,500, capital project bond repayment of $344,750, for a total expenditure budget of $18,474,140. Assessments for fiscal '23, operating assessments at $12,560,118, transportation assessment at $1,656,367, capital assessment at $274,564, capital project assessment at $275,563, total to be assessed at $14,766,613.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Arthur. All right. Any further discussion on this or the questions? Beth or the finance subcommittee, anyone?
First, can't express my gratitude enough to you, y'all. This is amazing. Just if you could give the status, anything change with the transportation or?
So, no, we still have, we have, we're awaiting the transportation bid. Probably will not open. Chris Breck, if I'm wrong, I think it's until March 21st. You know, a lot could change. We have an advocacy letter and I've seen several advocacy pieces going to the state from the Superintendent's Association. So there could be changes to, you know, the next round coming. I don't know what's next house raising means. So that could result in some changes. We're still negotiating with all the, there's a lot in the air right now. So I could be walking into town meeting with a different number or not. I have no idea. So all I know is this is what we know at this time and if there's any changes, we'll, we'll definitely bring them back and share them as soon as, as we know. But right now, I can't, I can't do anything else until some of those things, some of those balls come, come down.
I just can't express enough how amazing it is that you got it to this number, given where we were about three weeks ago. So thank you.
Dennis? Okay, all right. You really have to.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought the original, what changed with the transportation?
So we had to make some additional, people ask questions. We have a period where you can ask questions. And then if we have to do an amendment to the bid, we have to give people time to respond to that. So we just extended that to make sure people had adequate time to get their responses in. So that, that's just the appropriate. We have been, Chris has been doing an amazing job. I think he also is never sleeping right now because he just wants to make sure everything is 100% in check. He's been working with the AG's office. So we're just being, we're giving as much opportunity, as much information and by the book of the entire process. So it's worth taking, you know, doing the right steps and giving people time to respond.
Dennis?
I'm still a little confused about, you know, what happens once we get that bid response.
Just like it happened with the year we did, you know, the change to the funding formula that we had already voted our budget through. If, I mean, it, it all depends, right? I don't know. Let's say transportation goes down. We have to assess what we're going to do with the potential savings, but I don't know. Something else could go up. You know, we're still negotiating. So I don't know what that's going to look like. There may be, I, I don't think, I, I don't think I'll come back in and ask for more no matter what, right? I'm not going to go higher than this number, but we may go lower. And if we go lower, we'll have to say, send to the towns afterwards or, or make a different motion on town meeting floor.
I guess the reason I'm digging into it a little bit is that, that, you know, I know that we basically, you know, used a lot of our ESD.
That's why we're not saying, we're not guaranteeing.
And really drew that down. So, so we will have, and it would probably have to then come before the school committee again, right? In terms of if, you know, if, if there is a significant reduction in the transportation bill, um, if you, how you want to then handle the money, right?
Correct. But I don't think, what, my point is, I don't think at this point we have enough time to change what we're sending down to the towns. So the towns are going to print whatever these assessments are at their level. And then we'll have to ask for a motion on town meeting floors as a result with whatever we decide as a group.
But I think your point was, Dennis, it will come back to us to approve any changes, even though the towns are not going to see that until.
Right. No, we won't just do it on our own. Yeah, right.
This is the most transparent process we could ever have. Okay, so let's vote. Golly. I don't think I can vote on this because I wasn't part of the process.
Speak to that.
Yes.
You can abstain. I believe we were actually advised by council that you can still vote for stuff that you were not present for.
Or she can abstain.
Or you could, but.
She was at the budget.
I was at the budget hearing, so.
And she's looked at the documents. It's not like she's ever signed. She's looked at it. So I would like to vote, you can. All right. So this is on the budget approval. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane, yes. That's unanimous. We have a full 10 votes for this.
Wonderful.
Really nice. Thank you, everybody who was involved in that process. Now we have an advocacy letter that we need to approve before it's sent out.
I move to approve the advocacy letter as presented in today's agenda packet.
Second.
Second from Bonnie. Is there anybody who has a question about it, concern?
Is it correct that Renee Wood did a lot of the work on this?
She did.
Absolutely. I just want to acknowledge Renee's work on this. It's, it's a lot of work and I appreciate the extra eyes on it and her touch. So.
Yeah, really. But this is what comes out of those, the regional roundtable meetings that we started, which I think have been just another awesome group to communicate with. So it's members of the finance committees or it's the select boards and the school committee that meet with me and talk about issues at that level. And this was a result of that. And I think that is just awesome. It's really awesome.
Wanted to ask Nancy Worthington if she wants to have her name added to the.
No, because again, I wasn't part of it. So I don't think that's probably the thing.
Okay. Just wanted to be polite and invite you. Bonnie?
I just want to say that this was really a collaborative project. Renee volunteered to do that, that the outcome of one of her meetings. She, that supplied her with loads of information. And then she asked myself that, and I think Dennis, you too, to do some editing. So it was.
Renee doesn't like me, evidently.
Well, when she sent it to me, she said there are two notes from Dennis.
So you got in there. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it was, it really showed the strength of working together.
And I don't know, do you know if it was passed on Monday's Sheffield? I couldn't, I had another meeting.
I haven't known if it was passed at Sheffield.
I was at the select board meeting and I'm pretty sure it passed.
Okay. Yeah, I was still in another meeting.
I was asleep for part of it.
So Sheffield sent it out and they were going to share it with the other towns.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor and I think we're ready to vote. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Abstain.
And Jane, yes. All right. The letter is approved to go out. It's beginning of them hearing from us on a regular basis, I believe. So this is good. Now, the next item is field trips. Last week, we became aware of the seniors that were interested in us looking at our field trip policy. I see what's in the packet here. I don't see the amendments where we suspended them.
What, I think.
What did we actually do?
What, what we did is, I think, I think in a full school committee meeting.
Yeah.
As opposed, it was, I think that's what we looked back at the history and that's where we made the decision to suspend field trips during COVID. Kind of the same thing when we were talking about face masks, we suspended this policy. So what we did is just put the actual policy back in with, I think the basic request is, would you consider lifting the suspension of the policy that we already have? Without, I mean, that was all. It wasn't any change.
I seem to remember the suspension.
Yes, it was in a full.
Yeah. So the question is, is there, like tomorrow, are we talking?
Well, I think there are some people who are interested in planning field trips and, you know, so our next meeting isn't until April 7th. Then they'd want to be starting to plan. So, you know, we just thought of now as something.
Madam Chair, I move that we lift the suspension that was put in place by the school committee for field trips under COVID.
Second.
Okay, so Dennis moved to suspend the.
To lift this.
With the suspension of field trips. And second is by Jeffrey. Is there any? And Jeffrey would like to speak to it?
Yeah. I think like for those who are maybe cautiously like wondering if we should not do this, I think we have process around it for approving, especially long, uh, sorry, on field trips that still go through a review process. So I think like giving the kids and faculty the ability to plan, A, is a good exercise in getting back to normal, but know that we still have abilities to scrutinize the plans that are submitted. And if anything is arising in terms of discouraging news about health or whatever, we have that, that ability to still deny a field trip of us. So I still think we should lift this.
Yeah, very well put. I think we're ready to vote. Yeah. All right. So we are lifting the suspension of field trips. And through this motion, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay. Good news, all you people out there that want to do creative things.
They are ready.
Yeah, they are ready.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So nothing under unfinished business here. And now we are, we have very hard.
Unfinished business, I send both of you the letter to Public Health, next committee.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I, when did we get it?
This afternoon.
Right. So I didn't, I didn't print it. I ain't getting it.
And I wasn't pretending to my emails.
Can we put that as future agenda? I don't.
It would be a long wait.
When's our next meeting?
Seven, April 7th. Okay. I mean, she, you just said thank you, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I would imagine it's okay, but let's circle back because we do have an executive session on the end of this meeting. So if it turns out we get through this whole other stuff.
Do you want me to, we could try to forward it and I could have, do you want me to forward it to everything? Yeah, if you could do that from while you're there and then maybe on the way back, we could. Or maybe we could pull it up. Maybe Chris could pull it, we could pull it up. After, yeah, so after and then.
Yeah, let's get our other business done first and then try.
I'm sorry, Bonnie. I didn't see it.
That's okay. So finance subcommittee, I'm.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Danil and Laura on the community relations public school advocacy.
Yeah, we've got a meeting on Tuesday, 15, whatever it is. Yeah, 5:30.
I was anticipating that maybe Nancy Worthington could join you because she has a lot of community connections.
Yeah. Tuesday, 5:30, it's 15.
I gave her a copy of this letter that we didn't put out before.
Yeah.
All right. You can have fun checking more emails than you ever wanted.
I'm a university professor. I know.
Yeah, once we get through the other stuff. Let's see how quickly we can get through Dennis's policy subcommittee second read of these policies that he gave us last week.
Okay, let's just go down the list.
Now, Dennis, do we have to do each one separately?
Well, we don't have to read the whole thing. All we, all we have to do is take the vote part of it.
Okay.
So we need, basically, basically, we're going to start with, you know, and it was in the packet. The first one is DA fiscal management goals.
I move to approve DA fiscal management goals.
Seven.
Okay, Arthur, I've got the second on that one, I think. All right, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy, do you want to vote on this? No, okay. Jane and Jane, yes. Okay, next.
Next is DB annual budget. I move to approve file DB annual budget. Second.
All right. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yep.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, I'm skipping Nancy again.
Okay, next is. Okay, next is DB one, regional school district annual budget.
I move to accept, uh, file DB one, regional school district annual budget.
Second.
Second, Jeffrey and Art seconding, um, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Uh, Jane, okay.
Okay, next is DB one dash, DB dash one dash R, apportionment of expenses for regional school district budget.
I move to accept DB dash one dash R, regional school district budget, apportionment of expenses.
Second.
Okay, Art? Art, you.
Yes.
Jeff? Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
And next.
Next is, uh, DBC, budget deadlines and schedules. I move to accept DBC budget deadlines and schedules.
Second.
Yes.
All right. We're, we're, we're alphabetical ordering here. Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, yep, yep.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane? Next.
Jane, Jane.
I said yes.
Okay.
Oh, I said Jane and I didn't say yes. This is what I do.
It is.
Okay, next is budget DVD, budget planning. I move to accept DVD budget planning, second.
All right, yeah.
All right, okay. Art says yes.
Jeff? Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Next is. Next is BBG budget adoption procedures.
I move to accept BBG budget adoption procedures as presented.
Second.
All right, Art.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, James?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Last but not least.
Uh, significantly, last but not least is BBG dash one, regional school district budget adoption procedures.
I move to accept BBG dash one, regional school district budget adoption procedures as presented.
Second.
All right.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, yeah, all right.
I think we set a record for second reads.
I think we did. Thank you for presenting this all so clearly last week. Personnel and negotiations, Bonnie, would you make, like, make any comments?
We are continuing and we will, um, I just wanna let, we officially canceled Monday. So the negotiation subcommittee is not meeting on Monday.
Right.
And we received some proposals from the SBR EA and our attorney went back to, um, their lead in terms of getting clarification. And since it's all an executive session, that's about all I can tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I just wanna compliment Bonnie on how well she's keeping us informed, uh, because there's a lot of moving parts.
Wow.
I appreciate the time you're putting in on that.
Thank you.
All right, Art, anything?
No, no building in grounds.
Okay. Uh, Jim, do you wanna comment, um, on our meeting with Beth?
No, we had a meeting with Beth.
Monday?
Monday. Went very well. Projects are moving ahead and it's the same with the results here. Forward to our meeting.
All right. Executive minutes review will.
Nothing yet.
Nothing's happening and is there a date for the, uh, for him?
It's really up to you.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're waiting for something.
So whenever you two decide, I will make myself available.
Okay.
Well, we sent, we, I, both of us sent you available, yeah.
I, I don't know that I did.
No, Jane said she wanted to make sure nobody else wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've now confirmed nobody else wants to.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So then Jane, you and I should decide when to do it.
That would be great. I love to decide with you.
Now, the thing that's not on the list is the public health.
Well, we're going on to deal with the advocacy subcommittee that, um, I would like to have an official vote to dissolve the subcommittee, uh, that was never populated with approved members.
So move, second.
All right, does anybody need any further comment on that? Like, we approved it on eleven thirteen, twenty twenty-one, so now on, uh, three, ten, twenty twenty-two, we are going to be suspending it. So can I have a motion?
It's.
Yeah, Eric did it, Jeff did it.
I said so moved, you already put it in words.
Right.
I seconded.
Oh, all right, well, gee.
We're ahead of the game.
We're going so fast, okay.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane and Nancy, I assume you're abstaining. Okay, so I do wanna, uh, recognize, uh, Carrie and Peter for trying to make that happen. The answers that were needed to move as the next step never came in, so it got stalled. So the, we had the early childhood and Southern Bridger childcare programs haven't had meetings for us, but you wanted to comment on the meeting with the public health folks, Bonnie, or?
Well, just the moving ahead, um, do we have time to just look at the note?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you have rejected?
Yay.
I just told Josh when I do it.
I told him. I didn't really.
Oh, you didn't? I just told him right now.
Yeah, that's it. Um, can the people at home see it?
Yep. Move to accept this letter.
Second.
I don't think that, and nobody has any changes, I hope. Sorry, that, right, I don't mean to influence you, but.
No, I, as long as it was okay, I was writing as the liaison, but for the whole, and I figured we put it on school committee station there.
Great, great. Thank you for writing it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so now let's go to accept the letter to the public health liaison.
Yes.
Art, I have to call your name because this is an official roll call and I have to say who did.
Okay.
All right, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane, yes, no, I just wanna say that if we have a meeting where everybody's here, we can just say, everybody in favor, aye, and then everybody opposed, nay, won't that be fun?
It might be more fun for you.
Well, I got it, Dad, for the science.
You do.
So it's.
You've got much, much better.
Thank you very much, I am the police, okay. All right, so, um, future agenda items, suggestions, uh, we have a good night's break in between, so please send them to me if they're not on your mind right now. And I, I think I would take a motion to enter executive session first.
I move to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL chapters thirty A, section twenty A, three, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a death from, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair of the class. And not, and not to reconvene in open session.
Second.